All right, we're live. Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by founders of Get Oiling, Greg and Amanda Kilwin. Hey, guys.
Hello, everyone.
Hello, welcome.
We also have the incredible and actual literal rock star Colin with us today. What's up, Colin?
Hey, everybody.
Literal rock star. It's so excited to have you here today. Where are you in the world? Where are you coming in from? We're thrilled to have you. I hope you're excited about today's topic. Tell us if you are. We're talking about reactivating young living customers, keeping them active. And because we all have holistic mindsets here, we're going to talk about prevention, keeping them from ever going inactive in the first place. And things that you could start doing from the get go in your business from day one with a customer to make sure that they don't ever become inactive. So we're going to get into all of that today. But first, hi, where are you in the world? Come into the chat, introduce yourself. This is, if you're new here, a weekly call that we do every Thursday at noon Eastern time, and it is free for everyone in Young Living. And it is really designed to, of course, give you some, some strategy and some support and help with getting your Get Oiling system set up. But it's also like today is going to be the case here today. It's also going to be just a great place for you to get inspired, meet others in your community who love Young Living like you do. And by community, I mean global, because we serve folks all over the world here. And, and then, of course, you get to learn new tips and tools and skills to grow your business. So if you aren't yet a Get Oiling member, then we highly recommend that you get started. It's a dollar for your first month. And we have so many exciting things happening right now that can help you really take off running with what we're up to. So if you aren't with us yet, do go ahead and give that a shot. We're here to help you. And yeah, so let's, let's get on to it today. Chat's blowing up. We've got Vermont, Arizona, Minnesota, Missouri, Santa Barbara, Manitoba, Phoenix, Ontario, Virginia, Israel, Jerusalem, Vancouver, Chicago, Illinois. We've also got New York City. We've got B C, Canada, and of course, we have Fargo, North Dakota here on the call as well. So we are just so thrilled to have everyone from all over here today. We're going to go ahead and hop out of video so that we've got great recording quality here for these slides that I've created for you. Go ahead and turn off any distractions that you might have lying around. Put your phone on do not disturb. Turn off those tabs where you got your Facebook and stuff like that up, because it is time to learn. We're going to make some shifts today. They're going to make a material difference in our business long term. So our topic today is how to reactivate our young living customers and keep them active. So what we will be going over today are the fine print versus functional definition of inactive, because there is a true definition of an active for Young Living from corporate. But I believe that you should have another one for how you run your business. We're also going to talk about how we can invite customers to reactivate. We have a sort of reactivation, reactivation system, a checklist, if you will, that you can follow on a weekly or monthly basis. And then we'll talk about how critically we can prevent customers from ever going inactive in the first place. And then, of course, as always, we have live help and Q and A, because this is a live work session. It's not just a live learn session. It is certainly that as well. But if you're here to work together with us and you need help with something, there's going to be opportunity to work together here on the call. So if you have questions, if you came here today looking for support, whether it's about today's topic or not, please go ahead and head over to the Q and A and add your questions there. Our chat gets very lively and we don't want to miss anything that you're asking. So here in Zoom, just take a quick moment to orient yourself. It's going to be down at the bottom. If you're on the live call, there is a Q and A button. Click that and then you can ask your questions if you have them. And of course, if you watch this as a replay in the future and you would like to join us on one of these live calls, please do. We're at getoiling.com/weeklyworksession. You'll be the first to receive resources that we send out, that we go over on these calls. And of course, you'll be notified and reminded of the calls topics. You'll be reminded when it's time to go live with your link to join. And then, of course, you'll be sent the replay once it's up. And if you would like to have dedicated time, because these, again, these are live work sessions. They're designed to have time to work with you. Don't be shy. We can help you. So if you go to getoiling.com/web site review, we can work with you on anything. If you're just getting your feet wet, you're not sure where to go next, whether you have a website developed on our platform, or you're just looking where to get started and you feel like you need some hands on help. This is an opportunity for you to hop on a call just like this one and for all of us to work together here. All right, now, question for you guys in the chat. How do you currently handle inactive customers? How do you communicate with and approach your inactives? What do you do? Or do you do nothing? What does that look like for you? Can you share that in the chat for me? No judgment here. No judgment. We're all learning. So we've got inviting back to a class. Allison has a saved reply that she sends out that personalizes it. That's great. Awesome. Currently inactive with my inactives. That's totally fine. Added to your Good Oiling. So you send them a newsletter. Fantastic. These are all really great ideas. Nothing specific. Invite to classes, send a text or email, letting them know, offering ideas for what to order. Invite them back, send a postcard. Awesome. Okay, well. Again, all of these are great ideas. And what I'm sharing here today is by no means the definitive and exhaustive list of things that you can do. I think where we start getting into the things that we can do, you're going to see that what I tend to suggest is really more of an operating philosophy that guides these actions that you take. So if you want to send happy mail, if you want to invite to a class, if you want to send an email, if we're doing it with the right intention, then we'll tend to get the right result in this work, right? Which is that the people who want to take action will. All right. So thank you so much for participating here. And I'm so excited and don't, no shame on yourself. If you've been inactive with your inactives, that's why you're here today. You're learning how to do this different and how to do this better. So first, let's go ahead and get this out of the way of what constitutes an inactive customer. Now, I'm not an expert on Young Living's fine print, to be perfectly, perfectly transparent here. I'm not an expert. This was taken off of their website. And if it's still published on their website, I would construe that as being correct. Although, again, depending on the market that you're in, this might be different. And of course, when you might watch this video in the future, again, these things might change. But Young Living has its own definition of an inactive customer. It's not super material to what we're talking about here today, but I want to go ahead and touch it. So what Young Living says is a customer who has not placed an order of over 50 PV inside of a year, they go inactive. That is inactive according to Young Living. Okay? This is what Young Living calls inactive. Now, I believe that we should be operating with a different philosophy. So let's be real, 12 months, 50 PV. Look, people take way less time to check out a something before a year rolls around, right? If you started out with a plan in January, let's just say you had a resolution in January to go to the gym three times a week. If you weren't doing that by mid-February, chances are, you're not going to do it, right? If you're, and definitely if, if by like June, you're, you're not doing it. It's not, it's not a thing, right? By the time a year rolls around, someone who, especially if they hadn't had a lot of interaction with Young Living, had not been on Loyalty Rewards or Essential Rewards, they, they're going to forget everything, right? They don't care anymore. It's not something that's like in their purview. So also, and let's be really real here, 50 PV a year, that's not really active, is it? Right? If you're wanting to build a business with Young Living, I don't think that we would want to personally qualify 50 PV a year as active. So let's go ahead and define what inactive is for our own business purposes. Cool? Okay, so starting out, we need to be on the same page. Our ultimate goal as brand partners is to have as many customers as possible who are committed to achieving a personal wellness or lifestyle goal, right? By integrating Young Living products into their daily routines. This means that ordering on a monthly basis is a no brainer. This means that you don't have to chase them down, right? This means that being on Loyalty Rewards is a no brainer, et cetera, right? So we're going to commit to achieving the personal wellness, personal wellness or lifestyle goals. That's something that we want our customers to all do ideally. We also want them to discover at least one Young Living product that they can't live without. You may have heard this called a hero product. That is another goal that we have, right? We want them to be committed to using product because they want an outcome from using the products. We want them to find a product that they absolutely could never see themselves not having on hand. Eventually, we also want them to see the value in sharing Young Living as a no brainer so that they can get that product for free, or because they believe in Young Living's mission, or because they want to build a business, right? These are our goals. And I think we could all agree that 50 PV a year as a goal for a customer is not going to get us there. So active should mean something a little different than that, right? And then, and then, of course, we do want to see things happening more frequently than once a year in order for any of these things to happen. So achieving a personal wellness goal or lifestyle is a commitment, right? And that's something that we understand to be true about and for the people that we are helping to get started with Young Living. Now, if you drop a commitment for a week, you could pick it back up fairly easily, right? But if you drop it for months, you're looking at a do over, right? So where our goals are concerned, I think that three months can easily be considered for our operating purposes and inactive status. If somebody has not placed an order of any kind in the last three months, we should start viewing them as an inactive customer. Okay, now, obviously, there are some caveats to this, right? And we'll touch on those. So I mean, obviously, you're thinking of the, oh, but, 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 but I've got somebody that is different. It's true. There are some differences. Generally speaking, we're going to look at this as three months as being inactive. And we'll talk about the caveats here in a bit. But look, if, if you're waiting until someone shows up in your VO report as about to go inactive, you totally missed them, right? The opportunity was there, the best opportunity was there within three months, right? Ideally less. But just make sure that you aren't waiting until they're on this about to go inactive report, because that's 11 months of like, you know, they spent $50 once almost a year ago, right? Or 50 is a minimum. So before we get into preventing this and remedies, I do want to encourage you to have a couple of things in place that you might be able to use to sort of sweeten the pot and to help people see a greater benefit in making a commitment and being on loyalty rewards. Because obviously, if someone has bought into loyalty rewards, we don't have to worry about them going inactive for three months, because they want all of the benefits that Loyalty Rewards offers. And there are ways that you can sweeten the pot and help them see sooner what loyalty rewards can get them as well. So what I want to encourage you to do is to find a couple of ways that you can build value into commitment. So what this could look like first, and this is the easiest thing to do, is to do your best in all you do and how you communicate with your customers, and of course, how you get new customers started and with your prospective customers. Position yourself as an accountability partner, as a coach, as a mentor, however you feel fit to do this. Position yourself at least as an accountability partner on that customer's journey to achieve a wellness goal. Obviously, understanding they'll be using Young Living products as a part of achieving that. You're going to be that person who's showing up for them and reminding them what they want for themselves and cheering them on. You're going to be their cheerleader, their accountability partner. If we can, if we could just start by positioning ourselves as this instead of an order taker, or instead of as an adjunct to Young Living's customer support, we will go a very long way in getting great retention and people who will just place their orders and you don't have to worry about it, right? And don't we want that? We all want more of that. All right, so this is the easiest thing to do. This costs you nothing. And, and it's just simply a way of shifting how you're presenting yourself. So please do this if you aren't doing this already. Another option, and this is something that especially if you have a smaller team or you're just getting started, consider creating incentives for your active loyalty rewards customers. And if you are newer, consider co-oping with others to do this. All right, so that means you could have challenges, wellness scans, exclusive content, resources, calls, things that you offer that are just for people who are on their committed journey, right? You could, you could put this however you want to, okay? So co-op with others or create them yourself. If you are someone who offers wellness scans, we have an amazing course from Dr. Linda Allen that you can find on our partners page, where you can actually learn how to set up funnels to do like remote scans. And you could actually say, this is something that you get for free every month, so long as you are on your committed journey and, and call it, call it a committed journey, rebrand what this is when they're working with you, right? And yeah, Young Living calls it loyalty rewards. But you say, when we're on a commitment journey together, here are the things that we're going to do. I'm going to do this for you. And here's what you're going to do for yourself. You're going to have a loyalty rewards order. And we're going to make sure it's set up with a PV assistant. Cool, right? So consider creating incentives, whether you, again, are conceptualizing an experience or literally having a thing that you offer or do that's only available for folks who are on commitment, right? And again, if you are newer to this, or the idea of creating something new makes you feel overwhelmed, this, it's okay. Look up line of you. You may already have someone doing this on your team, right? You may have a leader up line of you who's doing this, and they're going to benefit from that consistent volume and, you know, a satisfied leader in their organization. So reach out. Maybe you want to reach out to someone. If you're a leader, reach out to someone who, who's in your organization, partner on something like this together. And then, of course, you want to make sure that you're really promoting and building up the perceived value of this club or level or experience to the public and to your general customer communications, right? So to anyone that you would communicate to, say, hey, by the way, for anybody who is on the commitment track, we've got an exclusive thing happening next Thursday at yada, yada time. If you want in on this, just reach out. If you don't have access, let me make sure that you do. All you got to do is just hit reply and we can talk about how you can set that up. And of course, when they hit reply, you say, hey, yeah, all you got to do is set up the order that you're going to need anyway for next month. Another way you could do this is, is say, you know, I'm, I'm going to be hosting a challenge and you could be a part of this challenge. If you're on a commitment track, if you don't know what that means, get in touch. And then what you do is you set that person up with the products they're going to need for the challenge anyway, and their next, and their next loyalty rewards order, right? Okay, so let's talk about how to prevent inactives. So now that we kind of have those, we want to have those carrots in place. That's what we were just talking about there, sort of things to sweeten the pot. So now let's prevent inactives in the first place. So we're going to talk about this from a few perspectives here. We're going to prevent inactives from the point of enrollment. So when you're getting someone new started. We're also going to talk about preventing inactives with your existing customer base. We'll talk about specifically personals, people you have a personal relationship with, and then others in your organization who may be enrolled under other folks or other leaders. And then we're going to get into sort of a weekly checklist, a system that you can run weekly. And you could also run this monthly, to be fair. And I'll show you what that looks like. And it involves using, using your Good Oiling system and doing a special import from the VO. All right. So first, let's talk about enrollment, starting from enrollment to prevent inactives. Please remember, this is a mindset thing. You're not selling oils, you're selling outcomes. If you're just selling oils, you can bet that somebody is going to leave sooner, because they're going to see, oh, well, I can just get oil somewhere else. They're cheaper. And look, you can say until you're blue in the face that Young Living is different, Young Living is different, Young Living is different. But when every company out there is saying, we're different, we're different, we're different, they're not listening. Your person is going to see that it's different when they see a difference in themselves after using the product. So focus on outcomes when you're getting someone started. Focus on outcomes. If you have not yet with someone you are speaking to, that you're going to share Young Living with, if you have not yet asked them, what's got them interested in making a change? You haven't done your job yet. If you haven't asked them what their goal is in their wellness or their lifestyle that they're looking to fix or change and when, and why is it important to them, then we have not done our job yet, okay? We got to be connected to their outcomes. Their why, their reason, is why they're going to keep buying. And knowing their why is one of our most important jobs as someone who's supporting their journey toward finding their hero product. And then being completely independent of you, because they love ordering, they do it because they want to, and they're starting to see that it makes sense to share, right? So please remember this first. You will prevent inactives. You will have better retention if you can work on outcomes. You're not an order taker, right? You are, as someone amazing here in the chat said, you're a guide on a hero's journey. Okay, so ask questions to learn their goals and then offer to develop a game plan with them. And you know what that game plan is, right? That game plan is literally, it's, it's setting up their loyalty reward orders. You're calling it a game plan. The game plan is going to be, I'm going to do this this month, I'm going to do this next month. And of course, you're going to be present and you're going to be showing up and being accountable, being their cheerleader, et cetera. But the function of this is you're going to be working with them to set up their loyalty rewards, their subscriptions moving into the future, right? All right, so once we've done that, we're going to assume a yes also. This is a really important thing. When you're enrolling someone, and again, this, this is, it's important that you start out with knowing what their outcome is, their desired outcome from doing any of this. That's how you get them onto loyalty rewards from the get go. Is you say, well, you know, would you, would you join a gym, but just for one month and expect to lose 30 pounds? No, of course not. We're working on your wellness. So that means we got to make a commitment. So why don't we go ahead and set you up for the next three months, right? Let's get clear on what we're going to do for the next three months, because you know, that's, that's what we're going to need to do in order to get a result. Can we agree on that? Cool. Assume that it's going to be a yes. Don't, don't tiptoe around this. Don't be scared to do this. You should feel empowered. You should step into your power and say, I know the best way for you to get the result that you want is to commit and to stick with this for at least this long. Are you ready to get started? They're going to say yes, right? Assume they're going to say yes, and they will. And then, of course, you want to make sure that they know what else they'll get along the way. Remember the things that you've put together to sweeten the pot, whether that's just a shift in perspective of something you already do or a literal something that you are doing or partnering with someone else to do. And of course, you're going to work with them to set up that game plan, AKA their orders. And then finally, bam fam, if you don't know this acronym yet, that is book a meeting from a meeting. Book a meeting from a meeting. Always know when and why you're meeting next and do not leave a meeting, especially at enrollment. But really, anytime, do not leave a meeting without knowing the next time you'll be connecting. All right, now let's talk about how we can prevent going inactive with our existing customers. First, literally everything that I just said, everything in the previous slide applies here, okay? Everything for a new customer applies to existing customers. Now, this is another important thing. And, and I think that this is a really important point to drive home for those of us who are using leveraged communication strategies like we're capable of using with Get Oiling. You could send out a mass email to everybody. Sometimes that makes sense, right? Like sending out your monthly newsletter or sending out monthly education and drip information like that, right? But where it comes to the journey that your personal has, or really anyone that, you know, an orphan that gets put underneath you, or someone who you've built a personal relationship with, who is maybe sponsored by someone who's not active anymore, et cetera, your people. You got to have a personal relationship with them and you've got to be working with them until they're at that point where they can spread their wings and they don't need you. And at that point, they've got hero products. They've, they've been transformed by using product and they see it as a no brainer to keep enrolling. Or it's, well, yeah, it's sure to enroll, but to keep ordering. And then, of course, to enroll others, right? The way that we get here is to treat our people like people and not numbers. It's easy to look at, especially the bigger your organization gets, it's easier to look at this, you know, huge number of people in many cases and, and feel overwhelmed, right? And feel like, oh, well, there's, you know, how, how am I going to reach out to all of them? Let me just send out one thing to everybody. This is why you pull reports from the VO. It's why you have tags and Get Oiling. You can communicate with leverage, but you don't need to apply the same brush to everybody. You want to be strategic in how you do this. And, and really critically, again, especially for that first 90 days or really up until the point that somebody has a hero product and is in love with loyalty rewards, and they've been on it for many, many months, you need to be on a cycle of one-on-one calls with your people, all right? We want to reach out personally to our people and keep notes in our Get Oiling contact manager. If you are working on, you know, talking to your inactives and preventing inactives throughout your whole organization, maybe they're sponsored by someone else, do your best first to partner with sponsors and leaders where possible, right? And then offer and keep a cadence of calls to help them reach their goals with Young Living products. This is for folks who already are around. Maybe you didn't start them out the way that I recommended in the previous slide, and that's okay. You can always start today to work with them in a new way. Offer them accountability. Ask them what their goal is. Offer them your support. Show them how to get what they want by getting onto loyalty rewards and keep that cadence of calls, right? Best way to prevent your existing customers from going inactive is to treat them like you need to treat all of them, which is the slide that we went over before this one. Now, let's talk about folks who are on loyalty rewards, cadence of calls. Shelley, thanks for asking that. That's really just calls at intervals. It's care calls. It's, it's once a month. Or to use one of my favorite phrases I've ever learned from a leader in this company, Jackie McLaughlin, what does follow up look like for you? And let it be set at their pace so that you could really be showing up for them and truly helping them and not just showing up based on when it benefits your check. That's how we really help people. And if we can really help people, then we can get retention and build an amazing residual business, right? So let's talk about how we prevent our current loyalty rewards customers from going inactive. So there is a way that you can do this. If you go to your VO and you go to my organization, go to reports, and then you want to look for the report called accounts enrolled in loyalty rewards, then you're going to customize that report and look for the forecast PV being less than 50. What does this mean? If the forecast PV is less than 50 for someone who's currently on loyalty rewards, they're going to lose their place in the building of their percentage, right? Of their, their rewards points, right? They're going to lose, they're going to have to start over from the beginning on the, the sequence of your, your loyalty rewards gifts that Young Living gives you, right? So for these contacts, and you're not going to find, there's not going to be a ton of, of these folks, right? Your folks who are in your VO who have, were on loyalty rewards, you're going to look for them. And if, you know, if there's 10 or less people, just go find them in your Good Oiling contact manager. If there's more than 10, then by all means, download that report, upload it into Get Oiling as a CSV, tag them with, you know, loyalty rewards about to expire, and then, of course, you know, reach out to those people. But the way you reach out here is just to basically say, oops, hey, I want you to lose your points and gifts this month. It looks like you might. So you might want to go ahead and turn on PV assist. I can help you if you aren't sure what that is, or just add, you know, a little bit more to your loyalty rewards order so that you don't miss out on whatever percentage. And you could actually look at their account and see whatever percentage of rewards points back you're going to be getting with your orders. How many of you already do this? Do you reach out to your customers and say, hey, hey, look, you're on loyalty rewards. Kudos to you. I want you to get the best benefit out of this as possible. Make sure, update this. I just caught something for you. Hey, just, hey, real quick, oops. Sure, this is a mistake on your part. There you go, right? Good. I'm seeing some yeses here. Excellent. Gold stars to y'all. All right. So now let's talk about engaging with our personals. This is going to be something that we're contrasting against engaging with folks who are not, are personally enrolled or people that we don't have a personal relationship with. Okay, so first, where we're talking about engaging with our people who may go inactive, try to do this before that actual inactive designation shows up, right? Try to do this before that. And ideally, make a point of trying to do this around the hasn't placed an order in three month mark, right? So if more than 90 days has passed since their last order, and they had never been on loyalty rewards, and they had never been on loyalty rewards for more than two or three months, we're going to treat them like a new lead. Does that make sense? Remember, you know, you 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 had a habit that you wanted to build, you have a resolution that you wanted to keep. You drop it for a week, you can pick that back up. You drop it for three months, we're, we're starting over at this point, right? So, look for folks who, and I'll, this is actually a system I'm going to be sharing with you guys today. If they were never on loyalty rewards or if they weren't on loyalty rewards for more than a couple months. We're going to treat them like a new lead moving forward. So this is your happy mail. Uh, you could send out phone calls, you can text, you can DM. All these different ways to reach out to somebody that you want to reengage to keep them active. All of these are appropriate. I would go with the one that you would normally use to communicate with them. Meaning like the back and forth, like sure, send happy mail if that's a thing that you do. Uh, but I would definitely pick another option as well here because we want to actually literally engage, right? We want them to respond to us. We want to be uh, you know, in in an opportunity to to actually communicate with each other, right? Follow the pattern that you have already used with them for communicating. All right. So this is your personals. These are people who know you that you know. Now, if these are people in your organization who are in this position, they haven't placed an order in, you know, three months and they were never really on loyalty rewards. What I want to encourage you to do is to spend, send a spear message. A spear message is short, specific, and expecting a response. This can, again, it could be email, it could be text, it could be a DM. But don't do any like copy paste impersonal cutesy stuff. Just send an email or a message to that person. Hey, I care about you. Can we talk? Right? That's not literally what you're going to say, but that's the gist, right? Begin a conversation with them. Right? Don't, don't just send them a copy paste thing. Send a genuine, genuine invitation for them to reply and to talk about something that matters to them with you. If you don't do this, if you just send out something that looks like it was made for three thousand people to see, they're not going to think that you value them enough to respond to you. So send something out, even if you do send this out to three thousand people, write it as though it's just a quick email that you're just shooting off real quick to somebody or a DM that you're just dropping in, okay? And a a quick tip, and this could go a long way for you. Take their VO contact info, their email address, their phone number. Use it to look them up on social media. When you find them, if you have mutual friends, send them a DM. Send a friend request. Become friends with that person. Right? If you aren't, like if you don't have any personal connections uh, on social media, that might be a little weird for them. So maybe don't, right? If you have mutual friends, absolutely send a friend request in a DM. Otherwise, just shoot them a quick email or text. And just say, you know, hey, I am someone in your Young Living uh, support team. And uh, I was just popping in to say hi and see how you're doing. I'm someone who can help you with your wellness goals. Is that something that you, you know, are working on actively right now? I have some resources I could share with you. Is that something you'd be interested in checking out? Right? Don't put all of that in one message, but like those are the kind of things that you can put out there. Does that make sense? So if this person that you find uh, who is about to go inactive, and again, that's by our terms, three months, right? If this customer has an active brand partner sponsor or a team leader, then what I want to encourage you to do first is to reach out to that sponsor or leader to see if they're open to working together. Because you plus other folks in your organization following these same steps can ignite an entire leg. You could get so many people reactivated this way and start a wellness challenge for moms going back to school or something like that. And uh, and and you could have just an incredible bit of momentum build from this if you choose to open the door for this to be a team effort. Now, that doesn't always necessarily work that way, and that's fine. Uh, so if you don't have a personal relationship with someone and or their leader isn't working actively, then you can still, like I mentioned before, use that spear message, short, specific, expecting a response. And use their contact info, look them up. If you have mutual friends, by all means, reach out to them, DM them, friend them on social. Because again, once somebody has reached this point of having gone three months without placing an order and they don't have a history of being on loyalty rewards for any length of time, we're back to square one. So you just treat this person like a new lead. The benefit here is, is that they're going to be easier to close because you don't have to sell them on Young Living. They've already bought it before, right? All right. So let's talk about the system we can use and get oiling alongside your VO to prevent inactives. First, in your virtual office, when you're logged in, you're going to go to my organization. Then you're going to go to reports. And then you're going to select the report that's called last order date. Then you can customize that report. And what you're going to do is select the last order date was before the month of, and then just go back three months and select that month. Then you're going to upload that report after you download that as a CSV from Young Living. Upload that to Get Oiling with a tag for everyone that you upload. That that tag is going to be called ninety days inactive. Okay? Then, once you've done this, you're going to go to your contacts and filter for this tags. And you can also, when you filter for this tag, there's a sponsor and enroller ID field in the filters um, page. When you're filtering your contacts, put your information in there. So we can first do this for our personals. Then you could, of course, reach out because this is easy. You know them, they know you. Reach out, add your notes to your contact manager, give yourself to-dos, reminders, bam fam, book a meeting from a meeting, et cetera, right? Then you can go back, clear your filters, filter for your tag, uh, and then use the tree viewer to view your customers under your team legs. Right? So if you have a team, if you've got people who are enrolling in your organization and you want to see where these inactives are showing up, then that can help you to easily see, hey, so-and-so has six people who have not engaged in more than three months. Let's see how we can get together and reactivate everybody with something exciting, right? And then, of course, you're going to reach out to those team leaders if that applies to you and see if they want to work together. If they don't or they can't, then you go ahead with the steps that I shared previously, which is just to send a quick spear email. You know, hey, I'm someone who's in your support team. I'm here for you. What's up? Right? And of course, let that person know if 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 they aren't actively working or you're not working together. Do it, go ahead and let them know that this is something you're working on right now, if you're a leader, and let them know that you'll be touching base with these folks and what your plan is. Now, don't forget, as you're doing any of these things, you're communicating with your people, use your contact manager. Add notes, add tags, add contact ratings, give yourselves to-dos as you're reaching out and communicating with your people and keeping them active. And after you've followed up with those tagged contacts, right, that ninety day inactives tag, delete the tag. Do you guys want to hear something cool? We have a brand new feature inside the good oiling system that you're going to see today for the very first time. That's called a tag manager. So you can, in just a couple of seconds, literally go in and delete or change, you know, edit whatever, a tag from inside your contact manager. Who's excited about that? I'm just so over the moon. Yeah, y'all are excited. Awesome. So after, again, follow the system here, communicate with all of the people who are tagged with ninety day inactive and then delete the tag. After you've done all of that, right? And so this system that I've just shared with you, I want you to repeat this either weekly or monthly. It just, it depends on the size of your team uh, and 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 what you're working on here. Now, let's go ahead and answer the question, and I've given a couple of baby examples here. But let's go ahead and answer the question, what on earth do I say when I reach out to these people? Right? Um, the the uh, logical thing is, hi, I um, I'm your Young Living sponsor or I'm someone in your Young Living organization and um, you're, you're not active anymore. And when you're not active, that means you're not placing orders. And that means that uh, my check's going down, right? We don't say that. Right? We don't say that when we reach out to people. Uh, we want to, we want to be really uh, mindful about how we come across. And again, intention is everything here, because if that's literally what I just shared with you, obviously, nobody's going to say that. But if you're thinking that, it comes out when you say it. Right? So, there's no one right answer to what to say. But there are a lot of wrong ones, okay? And they really have everything to do with your intention that you're going in with. So let's talk about some don'ts when we're reaching out to our inactives. First, don't make it transactional. Don't make this about whether or not they've placed an order. Yes, that is how you're literally finding them in your VO is somebody who hasn't placed an order in three months. But what does that mean? What does it mean for them? If we assume that they got started with Young Living because they had a goal in mind, you could be pretty confident that they didn't reach that goal. So, can't we look at this as people who are truly invested in the best outcomes for others? We can look at this and treat this and go in with a mindset with this, that we are going in out of service to help people who who showed up for themselves once to cross the finish line. Right? Don't make this transactional. Don't make it about you. Don't make it about your check. Don't make it about your rank. I understand the initial spark of intention to move you in this direction will be about these things. But we have to shift our perspective so that we are truly coming from a heart-centered place, because people can smell it when you don't. Right? And don't forget, again, they signed up for a reason. If you don't know that reason, your job isn't done. So your first goal in reaching out to someone, if you don't know this, is to navigate the conversation to where you discover the answer to this question. Right? And pretty please, let's not be a robot about it. Just because we can buy something that someone else wrote that has words that we that we think sound good, that has pretty images that we've got Canva templates for, doesn't mean that that's what that person needs to hear from someone in order to reengage and get back on track for their goals, right? There are things that can make your life easier, and we talk about loads of those on our calls here, and you can do all of this kind of stuff with our good oiling system. But remember that this is kind of a sensitive thing here. This is somebody who could choose to never come back. So why don't we grab them? Show them some love. Show them that we are committed with them and make it personal in this instance. Right? Lot of great ways you can communicate in bulk and use templates and all kinds of stuff like that. But this is really one that I just implore you to give a shot from a personal one-on-one outreach level because capturing those people and helping them to come back and get the thing that they came for could be the difference. And you finding your next massive leader in your leg, right? So, fact about this is, when you're reaching out, is that there is no magic sentence, but your magic words will come naturally to you when you do these things. All right. First, just be a normal human friend and check in on people like a normal human friend does. That's literally it. And if they're not your friend yet, be friends. And don't just wait to be their friend and show up and be their friend when it affects your check. This is why you want to have that cadence or sequence that what does follow-up look like for you? That natural back and forth volleying of communication with these people that you have introduced to Young Living with whom you are partnered in commitment to helping them get their goals reached. We got to show up for more than just when it matters to us, right? So make sure that when you are showing up, you are reaching out, you are getting details, you're asking questions, you're learning about this person. You know what's going on in their life. You uh, are understanding more about why they would have chosen to get started with Young Living. If you're keeping notes, then the next time that you speak to that person, you have so much more to talk about than just what's in your order this month, or did you order this month? Right? So you're not starting out at zero. Take the time to get to know their why and be someone who's invested in them to help them get that outcome. This why, why somebody decided to get started with Young Living, why they're placing their order this month, what they want to get out of it, who they want to be when this is all said and done, this should be on every contact card that you have a personal relationship with in your good oiling contact manager. If this is someone who is your personal or that you personally serve, meaning anyone in your organization who engages with you and seeks you out and responds to you. Those are your people. They need to be people that you know enough about, right? So make sure you're putting that onto their contact card. You can, just as an idea for outreach, uh, kind of give them a little courtesy and say, you know, hey, I've got a thing going on, right? Uh, here's a thing that I'm doing or that I've got access to that might help you with a goal that you told me you had. Is that something you'd like to learn more about? I'm not coming to them and saying, hey, would you like to learn more about how you can get cash back, but in points for products? And how you can get some free gifts from Young Living, but only if you do these things? That's, you know, we, loyalty rewards is great. But what's attractive to them? If they're not on loyalty rewards, it's obviously not loyalty rewards. What's attractive to them is an outcome that they want, right? So, here's a thing I've got. It's something that, you know, that you offer only to your loyalty rewards folks. But hey, here's a thing I've got. You told me that you had this goal. I think this thing might help with that. Do you want to, you want to learn more about it? Let them say yes, let them say no. And then when they say yes, and you tell them about the thing and you ask them if they want to get started, it's like you're selling them all over again. Uh, ask them if they want to get started. They say yes, then you say, great. All we've got to do is set up your loyalty rewards orders, your subscription for the next however long. And you're going to be able to retain access to this and get the products that you're going to want anyway. Right? So we're just positioning something just a little different. So you could just reach out and say, hey, I got, I got this cool thing. Are you interested, right? And then if they say yes, then you move them into getting them onto loyalty rewards. All right, so um, this is really important. Once your people, again, I I mentioned, we're kind of starting back over once we go three months without ordering, interacting with inactives. This is something that should feel like you interact the same as you interact with your prospects. Because when people are not active, they go back to square one, right? All of that Young Living language and all of this internal stuff that we all know because we're steeped in this stuff, they don't know that. Don't talk to them that way. Talk to them like somebody who doesn't know any of this. Because if they did, they wouldn't be inactive, right? So treat them like a prospect. Help to guide them toward the resolution of their goals, which is going to involve using Young Living product with a commitment. So these are people who are not bought in. People who have gone inactive, they're not bought in, they don't see the vision. So let's not act like they do. These are friendly connections that you've just got to get to know better, right? So that you can help them to get that outcome that they're looking for. So use your contact manager and get oiling to keep track of everything that they're sharing with you. If they have major life events, a birthday, a kid's birthday, they've got a big thing coming up. Uh, they've got a dog and uh, and you've seen a picture of their dog, write down their dog's name, whatever that might be, get to know them. And you're getting to know a lot of people because you're a networker, and that's why your contact manager is so important. You can really show up genuinely and thoughtfully to conversations with a hundred times more people than you would in your normal social day-to-day life because you're using tools like this. And it doesn't make those those uh, connections any less meaningful. It just means that you're better organized, right? You can have more relationships with greater depth with more people at a time when you're doing this. And isn't that the point? In order for us to be able to share Young Living with enough people, we got to have enough friends that are going to say yes to checking out a thing that we think is cool, right? All right. So keep track of all of this so that you can be a better friend to more people and be present when you are with your people and look for an opportunity to serve. Don't look for an opportunity to sell, look for an opportunity to serve. Look for places where they are wishing for something different. And ask them why they'd want something different, what they want that to look like. If they have support, if they'd like some. Right? That's your open door. Look for that. Be present. You want to be doing this with everybody, right? Because that's what you do. Once you realize that you can connect the dots and find solutions for yourself, don't you have a responsibility in some way to show others that they can do the same, that they don't have to be a victim of circumstance or symptom, right? Isn't that why you're here? Think about it that way. This is a mission-driven thing. And your, your relationships, including with folks who are currently customers or who never were, it's a long game, right? You want to help as many people as possible that are as ready as they can be right now, right? You want to help as many people as possible that are as ready as they can be right now, right? So offer that opportunity when it comes up, allow them to say yes, and then treat them exactly like you would treat a new Young Living customer. Right? Alright, so let's get into life help and Q and A. Thank you guys for sticking around. I know this is just a little bit longer of a training than usual, uh just because, uh well, it's, it's a mindset stuff, and that can take a little bit of time. Uh, so Rebecca had a question. Do you encourage a certain PV amount, uh fifty to a hundred? So um obviously, there's a minimum. You want to make sure that people know what the minimum is. But um what I would honestly do is not focus on the PV amount, but focus on the coverage of product uh that you believe will help them get the greatest benefit, right? Uh, so obviously, the minimum is going to be fifty, but the minimum for free shipping is a hundred, so why not do that? Right? Like, here, if you just do a little bit more here, you'll get a hundred, and there's usually some kind of a benefit that Young Living offers at a hundred PV anyway. Um, Anna Lisa, I, no, we don't. I wish I was more fluent. I would offer trading like this in Spanish, but I speak in Spanish like a third grader, so uh my apologies. Lo siento. I, I, I would love to do that. Um, but if you are someone uh who would like to translate uh and and borrow anything that we teach here, like feel free, because I would love for um the Spanish-speaking world to be able to have access to this. So you guys, without further ado, uh let's uh, let's go take a look, uh Greg, pretty please, at this awesome new feature. Uh, this is the uh the Tag Manager, where you can go in and easily just poof, delete a tag, poof, edit a tag. I'm so excited to see this, you guys.
No, that's pretty awesome. And my co-host here, let's see, that might be the one thing on the.
I can fix that.
Okay, sounds good. Super excited to share this. This has been on our wishlist for many years. Uh, finally has come around to the top of the pile, so excited to show you that today, so. Um, previously, like, in order to change tags or update tags, I mean, you can go add and edit a tag one at a time, obviously, but sometimes you adding a new tag and you typo it, or you're like, oh man, I want to have a extra space in there, capitalize it differently or something like that. You had to go like, add a new tag and then delete the tag from everybody. It was kind of a, a multi-step process. So this change here with the Tag Manager, are you seeing this? What, you see the whole, the whole screen or just one?
Uh, the whole dashboard screen.
Okay, okay, cool. Uh, yeah, okay. Um, so down here now, this new feature is tucked under contact. The Contacts menu header, click on Settings down here. And uh here's a contact tag. This is new. This is the new feature. Click on the button. And you'll see a list of all the tags in your account right here. And then you can easily uh add, edit and rename them. So there's a few little conveniences built in here, like if you would like to see who is tagged with that tag, just click on the tag, like, I want to see everyone who's using my unused tag, which is one I just added for today. You can see there's one contact there. Or, you know, downline or whatever tag that you might have here. You can, you can see that. Well, let's say you want, you're like, okay, I want to clean things up. I want to make sure, I want to rename this to downline as a capital D. Okay, cool. So click that little pencil icon, um type, you know, make your change. It'll update it, and then when you go view that, now your tag is in, uh where is it? So you can see like right here. It shows it now in uppercase, so a very convenient way to rename it, and it affects all the contacts at once, which is really nice. Uh, and then finally, if you want to get rid of one, um previously, sometimes there were, you know, it's like they're, they can be put on landing pages, a few different places, like if you delete them from here, they'll disappear also, I think, from your landing pages, but more, more importantly, the contacts, you don't have to go like bulk remove the tag from the contact. So I left this open for a reason here, this my unused tag. Uh, you can see it's got it tagged here with this. Now, if I go and um delete it, which is really the only other thing you can, well, I mean, you can add a tag too, I'll show you that in a minute, but if I delete the tag, there's a little confirmation box, so I want to go ahead and delete that, hit okay. Now, but this will work whether you have one contact or five thousand contacts or whatever that matches a tag, it just does it all at once. So now if I come over here and reload, you're going to see that there's no more contacts that match that tag. The contact is still there. Um, I think it was called mail test or something. The contact is is still here, but the uh, well, if I can remember what my name was on there, but um but the uh tag has gone now too, so that's kind of a useful way to get rid of that. If you want to add a tag, you can do that here too. It's quick and simple. My new tag, I'll put a little exclamation mark at the front, so it shows at the top of our list. And there it is. Now, there won't be any contacts, obviously, that match it at the moment, because now it's brand new, but it'll be there the next time they go into your contact manager to select um a tag for somebody. So if you like to plan ahead and put your, you know, organize your tags and get those in here, you can do that right up front. You don't have to do that one contact at a time anymore, unless you want to. And uh my favorite part is this empty tag that I always seems to manage uh to show up in, in an account. You can just delete it and then poof, all that, the little empty tag is gone. So, yeah, super, super fun. Hopefully this saves a lot of time. It's really quick and simple and easy to use. Um, again, it's under contact settings, and then under um contact tags, you can add rename and delete tags and then view the contacts that have the tag all from one awesome little screen. So, yeah, hope you like it.
I think they do. How many of us are having a tag house cleaning session this week? Uh, that is now super easy for you. It's really exciting. Um, and yeah, thank you for you guys in the chat. Like I, I mentioned at the beginning of this call, I'm not an expert in young stuff from Young Living corporate by any means. Uh, so uh yeah, as it turns out, the hundred PV is not a free shipping thing. Uh, now it is a ten loyalty rewards points, which still, like, why not make that the, I, I'm going to recommend a hundred because you're going to get ten back anyway, right? You could spend that next month. So um, yeah, okay, cool. So we got a couple of questions here. Allison, I'm not a hundred percent cure, uh clear on what you mean here. I want to keep my favorites menu at the top, but everything to go back. Can you tell me a little bit more about what you mean by that? And we're happy to walk through uh whatever that might be and show you how to get that done. Uh, Mary Ness, uh how can, uh can you explain how text credits work or point me to a training? I have a premium membership, so I think this might be in our help center. We might have an article that talks about this. Um, this is going to vary based on the market that you're in and the market that you're texting. Uh, so there, there are some kind of, you know, little fine print points there, uh and Greg is on that typing an answer for you, so um.
Yeah, I put the link in the chat, so if you want to check that out, it's there.
Perfect, thank you. Awesome. And yeah, Allison, if you want to, um if you're still in here, if you want to come out and and chat, just like raise your hand. Uh, okay, Greg had said he could change my menu back to the default if I delete everything, but I want to keep the menu item, my favorites. Okay, so that's a conversation I wasn't privy to, so I think you guys have got that. Um, awesome, awesome. Okay, well, let's see if there's uh that's another way to put it. Shelley, I love it. Shipping is usually seven ninety-nine, ten PV points equates to ten dollars worth of free products. Uh, so um you could also say, well, you know, when you get that, that's that much more money you spend on product next month, uh you know? So it's, it's still, it's, it's like delayed free shipping. I don't know. I'm, I'm being goofy at this point. Um. Okay, so we can go take a look real quick, Allison. Uh, we've got just like a couple of minutes here. Um. I'll go sign into it, or we'll go to your, your site real quick and uh see what we're looking at. Oh, thank you guys. I'm, I love all this feedback that we've been getting about the training here today, how it feels timely. I'm so happy that you feel that way. And I hope that you feel confident in how you do this moving forward, how you, you keep your folks engaged. Alright, let's go and share real quick, and let's take a look at your menu, Allison. Um, alright, so cool. We got a lot going on up here. Uh, my favorite things is a link to a page, it looks like. Um. Cool. I guess um you want everything to go back to default. So does that mean, Allison, that you want to go back to like the default menu, like on the built-in site, like when you signed up or, or something different? Because it does appear that you have a, a functional, you know, menu at this point. Um, oh, and there's a question here as well. Uh, if you're getting destined for diamond via text and you're not wanting to get those texts, if you type in no text as a response and send it, and that's no text, N-O-T-X-T, no space in between, uh then that will stop that campaign from sending to you, but it won't completely opt you out of all of our texts. And that is actually a setting in your campaigns under the text opt-out keyword. Um, because if somebody just says stop, uh then uh then you're not going to be able to send them anything else by a text. Uh, but you can stop that campaign if you use a custom word like that. So um okay, so Allison, what, what I would encourage you to do is just to um gather some examples of um of menus that you like. Uh, and then, you know, take note of what the features are that you have on your own website uh that you would like to use similarly. Uh, and then I would just, yeah, just start from scratch and just like make the menu you want, because all of the pages are still there on your website, right? Like you have all of those pages, they're not going anywhere. You're just going to be linking them differently. Okay, quick suggestion text if someone is almost inactive. Um, hey, how's it going? Seriously, hey, how's it going? Um, it's January right now, so um, hey, how's it going? Uh, do you have any resolutions you're working on this year? That's my answer for you, Annette. That is quick suggested text to someone who's about to go inactive. Hey, how are you? Been a while. How have you been? Start the conversation, start asking those questions, look for those opportunities to serve. And then, of course, you know how to serve because you've served yourself or you were served by someone who got you started. And uh you've got this uh great thing to show for it in the life that you're living as a Young Living brand partner. So uh thank you guys for being here today for all of your incredible questions. Um, and uh and Allison, for, for your uh menu specifically, uh we can absolutely work on this together. In fact, I think you are in the Personal Branding Intensive. Let's talk about this on that call today. We can work on that together. That's at three thirty PM Eastern Time today. So uh thank you guys for being here and uh and we are just so excited for your success in this new year. We look forward to seeing you next week. Until then, bye, guys.